Good afternoon and welcome to Grand Prairie City Council Meeting for Monday, January 27. I'd ask everyone in attendance to rise and join us in singing "Oh, Canada."
(Singing) "Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all of us command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee."
Thank you to the National Film Board for the images of our country, and to our very own Grand Prairie Boys Choir for the audio that you would have heard on the webcast, and to our small but mighty council choir this afternoon for the in-house version. We'll move on to the adoption of the previous council meeting minutes. Can I have a motion for those minutes, please? Councillor Minhaus.
Thank you, well, Mayor Given. I move the council to adopt the agenda... Sorry. The minute of city council meeting held in Monday, January 13 as presented.
Okay, thanks very much, Councillor Minhaus. Are there any errors or omissions or things we need to correct before we adopt those minutes? Seeing nobody ringing in, then I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. And can I get a motion for the adoption of the agenda? Councillor O'Toole.
Very much, Mayor Given. I move that we adopt the... City Council adopt the agenda as presented.
Okay, thanks very much, Councillor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on the agenda? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries as well. That brings us to our open delegation portion of our agenda. This is an opportunity for anybody in the community to come forward to counsel with any community-related matter. We like to offer any member of the public about five minutes to come forward and address counsel. And this would be that opportunity to do that here this afternoon. Welcome. If you just care to join us at the presenter's table, I'll ask you to introduce yourself, and we'll give you about five minutes, and then we'll have an opportunity for any questions if there are any arising from council. But welcome.
Hi, my name is Teresa Swarren.
Maybe you could just pull your microphone... The microphone a little bit closer. It does pick up people relatively well, but if you just slide it towards you a little... Pull the whole base towards you there, and then it'll be easier, and you can just sit back and relax and talk.
My name is Teresa Swarren, and I'm here to address the crime and the mess and everything that goes with it in Hillside. I am so tired of it. I have actually a stack of photos here of the mess that we had last summer and were still continuing. I walk past Rotary House every day when I walk my big dog. I see the stuff going in my back alleys. I see it going on our street. I see it going straight over there. I see it get emptied out. It goes under the tarps that are always still over there. And they're taking those fencing pieces that were never took down or whatever. They put them up, and they tarp it over, and they make themselves a house. They fill it up with everything they can steal. And like, I'm tired of it. I'm tired of staying up until 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning, then getting woken up at 10:00 to 6:00 from fireworks over there. Like, something's got to get done about that place. And also, I see the safe injection site hasn't been there for the weekend. It's still not there today. But if that comes back there, I will be fighting tooth and nail to get that shut totally down. Not moved, shut. It is doing absolutely no good. As you can see in these pictures, we have needles everywhere. We still have needles everywhere. We see them, little blue things that they use to clean their needles everywhere. They're throwing the needles in the snow, so we won't find them until spring if we don't step on them before that. But I'm just tired of it. Something's got to get done about Rotary House. Either you guys fence them in properly, or you build us like 10-foot-high fences. Gate our little cul-de-sac, keep them out of it, and put 10-foot-high fencing all around our cul-de-sac and make it a gated property. Because we can't handle it any longer. I'm 65 years old. I should have the right to live in peace and quiet, not listening to fireworks at 5:00 or 6:00 in the morning, yelling and screaming. Every night I take the dogs out, 2:00 in the morning. What do I hear? Yelling and screaming. It's constant, day and night. And I phone the RCMP because they're dealing behind my house. They hide in the alcoves at Boardwalk. And I phone the RCMP. They take running off back to Rotary House. Like, it's not like we don't know where they're from. We know exactly where they're from. And all the stolen that we see moving go straight to Rotary House. And nothing ever gets done about it. Like, why isn't bylaw going around there on the hours they're working at night? Something's got to get done. The RCMP come as soon as we call them because they know what we're dealing with. They know exactly what we're dealing with. As soon as I phone them or one of my neighbors phone them, they're there. And they're looking for the problem. But the problem is, the problem runs across the field and behind the fence at Rotary House while, you know, the RCMP cars can't drive across the tracks. So as soon as they get across the tracks, they're gone. And we are not going to deal with what we dealt with all summer. We dealt with major crime, and actually, I've been threatened. I've had pepper spray held in my face. I've had knives pulled on me, and I refuse to back down. We pay taxes. We have the right to live there. And I have a right to walk wherever I want to. They're not telling me where I can walk because I just look at them and tell them 'til you know what. And they threaten me with their stuff. Well, one of these days they're going to get eaten because I'm going to let the dog go. I walk them separately now, so I can let the big one go if I want to. I'm tired of it. The next one that threatens me with a knife or a pepper spray is going to get eaten. And if they hurt my dog, then I don't know what I'm going to do. Probably get a bigger dog. Teach him to eat them because I'm tired of it. Like, 65 years old, and we have absolutely no peace and quiet. There is absolutely no reason why I have to have a big dog to go out in my backyard, but I do. I refuse to go out there without him. It is not safe. And I have to go out there at 2:00 in the morning, circle the motor home, make sure they haven't broken into that. Go over to the storage shed. Make sure they haven't peeled all the boards off that I put over the hinges and the locks and across the front to keep them out. I had to screw boards everywhere on my shed. I can't get into it if I tried. Those boards aren't coming off until spring when I... I needed some things out of there, but that's just too bad. And we can't deal with it anymore. And I'm having another problem. My husband is totally crippled and can't walk. I can't leave him at home alone. Like, not the way they're breaking into people's houses. I was walking them the other day, and some guy is trying to get into a house on Hillcrest Drive. He saw me coming and took off running. They're doing their best to try and get into everywhere. What are we supposed to do? They should be the ones that are locked up, not us. But if nothing's going to get done, you'd better make us a gated community. We want steel fencing like they have around the old Rona, all the way around. Because we can't deal with it. And we shouldn't have to be forced to sell our houses and move. We have yards. Why should we be forced to sell if we don't want to? Unless the city wants to buy them all. Most people have said, "City offers enough money, they can have them and give them to Rotary House." We're not really enjoying them. We can't. How can you enjoy something you can't even go outside? The other day, yes... Day before yesterday is the first night...
Before you start into your next piece of information that you wanted to share, I'll just sort of note that we're at about the 5 and 1/2 minute mark now. I said we do try to make sure that we limit our public delegations to about five minutes. If there are some photos that you'd like to share, you could maybe circulate them to a member of administration. Mr. Miller's there. Yeah, or Councillor Bressi could take them. And we can circulate those around to council. Nobody can see you on the screen, and nobody can hear you if you're standing up and talking, so...
If nothing gets done, I'm going to go back on Facebook. I'm going to make a compilation of all my photo... Photos, of all my videos, and I'm going to get everybody else's webcam, security footage, and we'll do a whole thing on Facebook and upload it all to YouTube. And we're going to say, like, "You want to live in Grand Prairie? This is wonderful. Enjoy it."
Well, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
I will just ask if there are any... Before you leave, if you just want to come here to talk to us, then that's complete and that's great.
No, I'll answer.
If you wanted to have an opportunity for any questions from council, then we would take an opportunity to do that. And we'll see, there may or may not be any. Were there any questions for our delegation? Councillor Bressi.
Thank you, and I do appreciate you coming in. It's important that people talk to us, and often they don't come in and talk to us, so I do appreciate that. I'm just kind of curious. Have you noticed anything... Have you noticed more, less, or different activity over the last couple of days versus what you've been seeing in the last couple of weeks, or...
Uh, we have the same crew at the Rotary House fence. The thieves and the drug dealers are still hanging around there, like, really bad. The drug dealer that deals in behind my house, he hasn't been there for about four days now. So he might have left and followed the... Without that stupid injection site there. But what we want is that thing gone so drugs over there are illegal again. Illegal drugs should be illegal.
Great, thank you.
Councillor Friesen.
Hi. As Councillor Bressi said, it's nice to see you... That you do care enough to come in and let us know what's going on in your neighborhood and how it's impacting you. How long have you lived in your home?
Ah, 10 years.
Okay. And when you first moved in, I think Rotary House has been there since you moved in, hasn't it?
No, it was built after we moved in.
Is it just... Okay, so...
We were there for a couple of years before it was built.
Okay, I was thinking it was more than 10 years old, but you would know certainly. You'd remember that better than I would.
Oh, yeah.
How has it gone over the years? And what... When did you notice that it started to become really problematic? Or if you can just tell me a bit of that sort of ebb and flow over the years, please?
As soon as Rotary House was built, we noticed it right away. We noticed a lot more theft. We noticed they were coming into people's yards, trying to get into people's houses. And we watched the trucks circle in the alleys late at night, looking... Going really slow and looking in everybody's yards to see what was in there. And it's just progressed. It's gotten worse and worse and worse.
Okay. So fairly steadily, just steadily worse, and you're just really at your breaking point now?
Oh, basically, yeah.
Thank you.
Councillor O'Toole. Once again, I want to thank you for coming in and talking to the council members here today. I noticed those pictures were all taken in the summer of last year. It looks like some from the fall.
There are some that I took in winter. But after getting bear sprayed, I have to take them at dark, and they don't show up.
You were bear sprayed?
I was... He held the can like he was... Not even from there. He was probably just under the table from me with a can of bear spray. He said, "I'm going to spray you and your dogs." I just stood there, and I looked at him. I was turning the... I didn't have the harness on the big dog, just his collar, so I was slowly turning it. So one guy kept backing up. Each time I do a turn, he'd notice, and he'd back up. Because I was just going to let the big dog go.
So at that particular time, did you inform the RCMP?
Oh, yes, I did. I was lucky. A truck came. He was picking up his wife from the hospital, and they drove past a daycare. This was right at daycare, 7:00 in the evening.
Okay. I just want you to know that the city is doing things at this point. It may not be as fast as you want to see it happen, but the city is working at trying to make that a better area.
Yeah, we've been dealing with this ever since Rotary House was built. Our area was good until that was built. We could walk.
Okay.
Like, now... The other day was the first time... Two days ago was the first time I saw an actual person that wasn't a thief, drug addict, a dealer, go walking. And I told her, I said, "What are you doing out here, walking by yourself? You can't do that." I said, "I'll walk with you." So I took the dog and walked with her.
Well, thank you.
Because it's not safe.
So, thanks, Councillor O'Toole. So just in terms of your experience of your neighborhood, since you've lived there, you mentioned that Rotary House came along after. So did you... The first few years while you were there, before Rotary House was constructed, that same sort of shelter space was just on that side of City Hall, rather than that side? And so did you...
It was much smaller.
Oh, it was much smaller, yeah, okay. So that was the... That was... Seems to be the difference maker in your mind.
Yeah, it didn't really impact us that much because most of the ones using it were the town alcoholics. And they didn't break into our homes. They didn't steal our stuff. They'd apologize if they were drinking a little bit too close and you noticed them. You know, like, "I'm sorry. We didn't... I didn't mean to startle you or scare you or anything. We'll just move back further." I didn't have a problem with that.
So do you have a sense of whether it's the types of things that people are consuming are different now than that experience that you sort of just referenced?
Oh, yeah, definitely. Like, we didn't have... We weren't... We didn't have all the heroin addicts, the meth, the coke, and everything else that they're using, the crack. And they just go crazy. They don't even know the dog's barking at them. I'm sorry, but you watch them after they shoot up heroin, which I've witnessed quite a few times because they don't do it at the safe injection site anyway. And they stand there. They don't even realize that the dog is actually barking at them.
I see Councillor Friesen had a question for you.
I do, thank you, Mayor Given. And it's actually not a question, but actually a request of you. You are well-spoken and clear in what the concerns are. And like Councillor O'Toole said, we're working very hard as a city on what we can manage around this issue, but it is really a bigger issue than the city can manage. And I would like to ask you to also contact your MLA and ask for provincial support in dealing with the issues that we're seeing that give rise to these kinds of behaviors, these interruptions in your life that you see. And that's a really important piece of this. And when our city residents let us know what's going on and where it's going on, we can advocate to our province. But it carries a lot of weight if you, as a resident, get in touch with your MLA and just sends an email or stops by. You can make an appointment to see them and that sort of thing. So if you would do that, that would be helpful as well to the overall picture. Thank you.
Thanks, Councillor Friesen. I don't see anybody else in the queue with any other questions or comments. So thank you again for being here this afternoon again. It's a pleasure to see you.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you. I don't see anybody else... I don't see anybody else actually in the public area, so I think we'll close our delegation portion of our agenda. And we can move on from there. We have no items of unfinished business nor reports. And so that'll take us to committee business, starting with our Infrastructure and Economic Development Committee meeting. And Councillor Friesen, I think that's your set of minutes, isn't it? Oh, sorry, Councillor Bressi, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move the council adopt the minutes of the Infrastructure and Economic Development Committee meeting held Tuesday, January 21st, 2020 as presented.
Thanks very much, Councillor Bressi. Any errors or omissions? Any changes we need to make? Again, seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor Bressi.
Great, thank you. I would move the council direct the mayor to write a letter to AquaTerra shareholders, initiating a review of AquaTerra agreements as per the review clause found in the AquaTerra master agreement. And just speak to this briefly as the main agreement that allowed us to work with the county and with Sexsmith and eventually with Wembley to form and run AquaTerra. It allows for a review every six years after the agreement's signed. And formal review of the agreements that are underpinning AquaTerra has never been undertaken. So Administration's recommendation committee felt it would be good governance to take a... Use this opportunity to review the agreement, see if there's any changes us and other shareholders might want to see coming out of it. So I hope council will support this motion.
Okay, thanks very much, Councillor Bressi. Any discussion or debate on the motion? I don't see anyone ringing in or waving their hands madly, so then I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor Bressi, anything else you want to highlight from that set of minutes?
I'll highlight a few things. First of all, in our Economic Development Department, you'll notice that there's some councillors missing right now. And I believe that that's because they're with members of our administration at the International Council for Shopping Centres Conference, which is happening in BC right now. And that's an area filled with learning, filled with networking, but also filled with some meetings that were already lined up before they even went with brokers, investors, and potential commercial tenants. And it's this an opportunity that our colleagues are taking to try to recruit some business and investment to our region. So I'm excited to see us being proactive about that. A few other things I'll highlight is, right now, administration is in the middle of tenuring out road rehabilitation overlay programs for the upcoming summer. I've been very proud to see this council committed to investing in our roads and maintaining the infrastructure we have. So I'm excited to see work already getting out of way for the upcoming construction season. And the last thing I'll highlight is kind of a fun one. You'll notice across the street from us at the Montrose Cultural Center, there's a new skating... Skating oval. Not a speed skating oval, just a skating oval. And if you drive past the reservoir, you might also notice that there's a little hockey rink on the reservoir area that's getting developed. And both of these were opportunities where residents, in the case of the Montrose Cultural Center, the downtown association came and said, "Hey, someday, maybe next year, could you guys create a great amenity for the community?" And instead of saying, "Yeah, maybe we'll look at that. Maybe we'll study that," our city administration realized, "Well, we've got some resources within us to do this relatively quickly and relatively cheaply, and so let's just go ahead and do it." And really quickly and with existing resources, administrations taking the initiative to create two things that I think will be a really great part of making Grand Prairie better for a lot of our residents. So I was excited to hear this report at committee meeting.
Thanks very much, Councillor Bressi. Next, we'll go on to the Community Services Committee meeting. And that, I think, is where I was thinking of Councillor Friesen. Councillor Friesen.
Thank you, Mayor Given. So I'd like to move that council accept the minutes of the Community Services Committee meeting held Tuesday, January 21st, 2020.
Thanks very much, Councillor Friesen. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing none, please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor Friesen, anything you want to highlight for us?
Thank you, yeah, there's no business arising, but I was going to highlight the skating surface at the Mount Rose Cultural Center. We're... Doug and I live downtown, so we're very excited to have kind of another attraction downtown to bring folks to. And I think that's a really exciting, community-led initiative. There's another one that we got a bit of an update on, a community initiative for Flags of Remembrance. And we'll see that happen in the fall, in October, November time-space, where flags will go up and families can actually donate a plaque to remember their service members in their families. Um, what else? There's... Oh, Try It Day happened, and about 40 sports were available for folks to try out, and that went really well. Some service changes happening to the County Connector, adding Saturday service. So that's to look forward to. And these are all ridership-driven sort of... Where the demand is, they go. So there will be some services. Some of the trips will be dropped in the County Connectors, the bus that comes... Brings folks in from outlying communities. The ones that are dropped are the ones that were not really getting ridden anyway. But the Saturday service should really pick up some traffic into our city on those days. So that's it for community services.
Thanks very much, Councillor Friesen. Next, we'll go to Corporate Services, and I think that's Councillor Minhaus.
Thanks, Mayor Given. I move the council adopt the minutes of the Cooperative Service Committee meeting held on Tuesday, January 21st, 2020 as presented.
Thanks very much, Councillor Minhaus. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor Minhaus, anything you wanted to highlight from that set of minutes?
Yes, there's a couple of things, yeah. The assessment and taxation for new... New assessment are nearly completed for 2020. New assessment will be reflected. Any physical changes in the property as well, any market changes. Setment notes should be mailed out near the end of this month. Taxation installment payment have been recalculated, and the letters to those property owner who pre-... Practipped have been mailed in their new payment amount. The city approaching 10,000 properties in tips and collected roughly $5 million from the program, approximately 40% tax levy. This fund provided city with the monthly cash flow until the tax is collected in June. And there is a current 56 bits in Q... For the Q1 2020 implementation for the procurement software is target for the end of February, and the collaboration is underway with the new... With the county and procurement department for the training and the vendor information. And the cooperative effective and strategic initiative council attended the tour for Eastlink Center last week highlights improvement that have been made. Eastlink using lean methodology and the S.S.O.C.D. impact. The holidays stalking suffer was success, bringing over $118,000 for the Eastlink Center. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Councillor Minhaus. And that'll take us to Protective and Social Services. Councillor O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I move the council adopt the minutes of Protective and Social Services Committee meeting held Tuesday, January 21st, 2020 as presented.
Thanks very much, Councillor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate? I don't see anybody ringing in, so please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. And Councillor O'Toole, I think you have a few...
Yeah, I've got a motion to bring forward, and then I'll talk about the rest of the meeting after that. So Bylaw C-1294A, it's an amendment to the Display of Address Bylaw. And I move that council give first reading to Bylaw C-1294A, being an amendment to the Display of Address Bylaw.
And that is a motion for first reading, so we won't have any discussion or debate. I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor O'Toole.
I move that we give second reading to Bylaw C-1294A.
Okay, thanks very much, Councillor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on second reading?
And I can just comment a little bit, if you don't mind. The proposed amendments will keep the bylaw from being in conflict with the provincial law and provide enforcement with sufficient fine incentive to gain compliance in all instances.
Thanks, Councillor O'Toole. Any other discussion or debate? Seeing none, I would just say that it seems like a good idea to keep us in compliance and in alignment with provincial laws. And so on that basis, I'll be supporting the second reading. I don't see anybody else ringing in, so I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries as well. Councillor O'Toole.
I move to have third reading of Bylaw C-1294A at this meeting.
Okay, thanks very much, Councillor O'Toole. So this is a motion to have third and final reading here this afternoon at this meeting. If this motion doesn't pass unanimously from the council members in attendance, then the third and final reading would come back at a subsequent council meeting. Is there any discussion or debate as to the merits of having third and final reading? Seeing nobody ring in, I will call for the vote. That motion does carry unanimously, so Councillor O'Toole, we can close this one out.
I move that we give third reading to Bylaw C-1294A, being an amendment to the Display Address Bylaw.
Thanks very much, Councillor O'Toole. Any last discussion or debate before I call for the third and final vote? Seeing none, please enter your votes. Thank you. That motion carries as well. Councillor O'Toole, anything... That motion carries as well. Councillor O'Toole, anything else that you wanted to highlight from that set of minutes?
I just wanted to let everybody know that I was filling in for Mr. Palott, who took a well-deserved vacation that particular day, so I moved up to be deputy chair in the meeting. First report we had was the Director Service Area verbal report. We had three areas that we commented on, the fire department being one. If you see a bunch of spacemen walking around fire trucks, it's actually the fire department walking in hazmat suits, and they're checking their monitors during the next couple of weeks. This is an annual procedure to ensure operational readiness, and the health and safety program is followed accordingly. The Enforcement Services Administration is working with the RCMP to establish secure radio communications for improved service and safety, and the Community Social Development Systems Change Labs for Integrated Coordinated Access were held on January 8th and 9th, and I did attend one of those labs. The ICA survey is located on the City of Grand Prairie website. The deadline for the survey is January 31st, 2020. So if you have some concerns, maybe you can address them during the survey. And the Passionate Hearts Award Ceremony will be held at Revolution Place on February 14th. It's back in Grand Prairie, and if you do happen to have a request for applications, that, hang on here, a request for applications is coming out for volume bowl persons, daytime and extreme weather programming. So, sorry, got that mixed up a little bit. Other than that, there was a few other items, but we'll move on. Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks very much, councillor O'Toole. I think that handles all of our committee business. We do have one item of correspondence this afternoon from the Chief Public Health Officer, Dr. Albert Devilliers, from Alberta Health Services, with respect to phase two of cannabis legalization. I think it's provided there for council's information. It relates the Alberta Health Services perspective with respect to regulating consumption of cannabis. I note that it mostly focuses on issues like combustibles and vaping. Now that edibles are legal in Canada, I guess I would question our, it's going to be a very challenging area for municipalities to regulate if it's at all possible. I don't know if any council members had any other comment on the letter, but it is provided here for council's information. And unless there's anything else, we could have a motion to receive that for information.
Mayor Given, I'll move that we receive that letter for information.
Thanks very much. Any discussion or debate? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Please vote. That motion carries. That would take us to receipt of delegation business. We had a presentation and some images that were shared with council. Could I have a motion to receive that presentation for information, or any other business that might be arising? Councillor Minhaus?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move that we receive the delegations and information for the Rotary House issues.
Okay, thanks very much, councillor Minhaus. Any other discussion or debate? I don't see anybody ringing in. I would note that city administration has taken some pretty active steps over the last little while, particularly as we saw the real highly intense congregation of informal encampments over the course of the summer. And appreciate that administration heard the community's concerns at that time and looked to regularize that, and was successful in moving many people out of that informal type of housing into something that is better suited and also more appreciated by the community. I think we have to recognize, as councillor Friesen said, that these are pretty complex social issues that as a municipality, we only have a certain degree of influence on. I really appreciated the resident acknowledging the fact that RCMP, who her property taxes pay for, are very responsive when she calls, and that's certainly a good report to hear back. But I think it's a good reminder for all of us that there's more work needs to be done by all of us in government to try to deal with these issues. I don't see anybody else ringing in, so I'll call for the vote on councillor Minhaus's motion. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. We have no notices of motion today, and we have no scheduled public hearings or scheduled delegations for this afternoon. So we will go to council member reports. And councillor Friesen, I think you had something for Grand Spirit Foundation.
Thank you. I had the opportunity to attend Grand Spirit Foundation as the alternate for councillor Thiessen, and it was my first meeting there. It's always nice to sit in on different organizations when you haven't been there before, so I really enjoyed it. I'm amazed at how active these folks are with some new buildings. So they are actively working on a number at different levels, but the two that they really are after getting going is a house home in DeBolt. And the municipality there, the M.D. is working very well with them, and it's moving forward a little bit slowly, just as things fall into place. But that one is going to happen. And then they're moving around some places in Sexmouth as well to build six new units there, so that's pretty exciting. And the slightly less exciting news is the impact of the budget. Of course, that's the provincial budget on Grand Spirit Foundation. As we noticed at our budget talks as well, we knew that there were a few cutbacks from the provincial level that would impact what we could do here, and they've noticed that as well. The most concerning that I noticed was a decrease in the budget that allows for rent subsidies. And as you know, as you may know, Grand Spirit Foundation does have a number of families and individuals who are in there who do receive rent subsidies. Fortunately, those who are in there will still be receiving that rent subsidy. However, no new residents will be able to benefit from that until, well, until we see a change in budget likely. And what this means, it actually impacts, there's about 440 families, or individuals and families, that represent about 1,000 people who are on the waitlist for subsidized units. And so that's a huge chunk of people, for sure. Now, of course, that's throughout the region. But, yeah. And I'll end on a good note. The needs assessment that Grand Spirit Foundation has spent the last year or so working on, the final draft has been approved, so that will soon be a public document. So we can all look forward to that being published publicly. Thank you.
Thanks very much, councillor Friesen. And councillor O'Toole, I believe you had a report for us.
Yes, thank you very much. This is from the Community Futures Grand Prairie and Region. We did have a meeting here on January 16th, the Board of Directors, and we did have a couple of items come across the meeting that we needed to fill up and explain to each other, which is the quarter of the financial statements ending December 31st, 2019, and the Fund and Community Futures Grand Prairie Region Operating Fund and Regional Innovation Network. So we had quite a discussion on a lot of that and where the money is going. We did notice that the financial institutions, the banks in Grand Prairie and Region, are not giving out as much money as they have in the past when it comes to loans. They've really tightened up their shoestrings. But they are sending clients to the Community Futures, and which is kind of baffling at times, but we are seeing a number of people not only coming in for loans, but for business advice, and the staff there are going out and helping them do and make good business decisions. So not only is it a place to get loans, it's a good place to get banking and business information, and making sure that there's a road that we stay on and not go off that road, because the people that are giving the advice have been around for a long time, and they know where the slippery slopes are, and keeping the people that have a good idea, they want to get in business, but they haven't overcome some of those obstacles yet. We did the office report, and basically, it was supposed to be a two-hour meeting, and it turned out to be about three and a half hours, just lots of good things to talk about. So I will have some possibly good news here in the next six weeks regarding the location of the Community Futures. We may be changing. So thank you.
Very much, councillor O'Toole. And I'll go to councillor Friesen for the start of council roundtable. Councillor Friesen?
Thanks very much. It's been a quiet couple of weeks for me, but I would like to highlight Big Brothers Big Sisters. I did go to their annual fundraiser a couple of weeks ago and had a fantastic time. Big Brothers Big Sisters has over 100 kids on their waitlist right now who are waiting for brothers and sisters, big brothers and big sisters, to come and just befriend them and, you know, do some normal stuff with them, play some games, you know, go out, do community activities together, step in and be a healthy adult figure in these kids' lives. And it does mean a great deal throughout the lives of these children. We always hear from one or two who've been little brother, little sister, and that they maintain close relationships often with their big brothers and big sisters throughout their life, and the impact that it has on their lives is incredible. So if anyone's watching at home, and if you've got even just a little bit of discretionary time that you can spend with youth who needs an adult figure in their lives, who will just befriend them, consider calling Big Brothers Big Sisters. Thanks.
Thanks very much, councillor Friesen. Nothing from councillor Minhaus, I'm seeing. Then we'll go to councillor O'Toole.
All right. I did attend the tour of Eastlink Lean Process Improvements, and we get to go into the basement, and there's a lot of items there that were addressed. And the cost savings is incredible that we've done in the last year since they've actually implemented this. And that's not the only aspect of the tour that was cost savings. There was also just the way they book and set up, as well as establish the routines for just everyday business at Eastlink. So it was quite a good tour. I felt it was something that everybody on council should see. It took us about two hours, but that's because I was asking lots of questions. I think if anybody else went, we'd probably cut it down to about an hour and a half. But with that, I just want to mention that I went to Isabel Campbell School, and it was literacy week, and I did read to Agreed kindergarten class. And the book I chose, which was put in my hand, I didn't really have a choice. It was a book with no pictures, and I got what I wanted, a lot of fun and happy faces and smiles and a lot of conversation after the book was read. So, thank you.
Great. Thanks very much, councillor O'Toole. Councillor Bressi?
Great. Thank you, Mayor Given. Two things, two committee, or two things that I'll highlight is, one is the Accessibility Advisory Committee, which is, sorry, the Community Accessibility Advisory Committee is a community-based committee that our city administration provide a little bit of administrative support to it, but doesn't have any formal council involvement with it. However, I understand that councillor O'Toole's been going, it has been a very important contributor to it for many, many, many years now, and it's something that I attend when I'm able to. And something worth giving council a heads up about is, the members of the committee are kind of hoping there'll be some more formal council involvement on it, not just the two of us showing up kind of as community members more than councillors. And so something you might be seeing a request from them in the near future is a request for an official council appointee, worth highlighting, because I know we're in the middle of a review of what we do with external committees, so it's worth giving you guys a heads up about. The other thing I'll highlight is the Community Opioid Response Task Force. The last meeting I got to attend with Mayor Given and councillor Thiessen. And again, that's very much a community-driven community. It's something that Mayor Given called together at the onset, and that city staff provide the backbone administrative support to it. But really, it's, community organizations are really driving that table and really getting things done there. And I think two things worth highlighting from our last conversation is, one, now that it's almost two years up and running, the task force is starting to do some revisioning and work of, what's its mandate going to be that it's going to adopt in the future, and how's it going to help push the balls that it's pushing forward better in the future? And so if anybody has thoughts about how that task force could be better used and better implemented in the city, then now's a good time to be sharing that. But I think the other thing worth pointing out was, it was a scary moment to me where, at the end during the roundtable, we had four committee members mentioned, when we talked about what they're working on, mentioned, well, my contract's up on March 31st, and I have no idea if there's funding for it after that, so I'm not really working on anything that goes beyond March right now. And that was really concerning for me to hear, not overly surprising, but really concerning for me to hear. So I think that's worth council being aware of, that there are some really important community resources addressing opioid use in our community, which may not be here in a couple of months. And so it's worth us being aware of that.
Thanks very much, councillor Bressi. I will just provide council some brief updates on a couple of different things that I don't think have been mentioned. Appreciated with other members of council to have an opportunity to meet with the Board of Aqua Terra. A great opportunity to share the different priorities of city council with the people that we give over our company to manage and operate on our behalf. Certainly appreciated that, and I'm looking forward to some meetings that we're having towards the end of the month with all shareholders to have a discussion about what we see as priorities for the organization. And the city manager and I attended in AUMA on Wednesday and Thursday of last week at the AUMA President Summit. It was focused on municipal finances with the sort of sub-headline of transparent and effective, where municipalities were sharing insights about what they do in their community to enhance transparency around municipal budgeting and finance, and what municipalities are doing to ensure, on an ongoing basis, what municipalities do to ensure that they are achieving the best value for dollar and the most efficiency possible. I will give council members a heads up that everybody really appreciated the presentation from our manager of corporate efficiency. Ms. Kinza Trim was there. AUMA invited her to make a presentation. And I will say that she did a fantastic job on the panel she was on. And to the extent that we're going to have to start to charge for her services to other municipalities, I had at least three mayors come up and ask when they could get more information about the things that we're doing in Grand Prairie. The city manager had about the same, I think, from his colleagues from different communities. And just one of the items that captured people's attention after it was referenced very briefly was the snowbot. The Calgary city councillors that were in attendance have asked for a video of it because they have an innovation fund that's available to council members. And so they're thinking that they'd like to use their innovation fund to follow the city of Grand Prairie by trialing a snowbot down in Calgary. But also, a lot of the municipalities took a real interest in our efforts around lean and the journey that we're on as an organization. And so I can imagine that that will be a conversation that, it won't surprise me, council, if in the future we end up hosting a municipal lean session here in Grand Prairie. I have no doubt that after the presentation that was given at the AUMA meetings, that that would fill up pretty quickly. And so just kudos to our administration team. I think it's another good example of how what we're doing here, day in and day out, is really leading the province in a lot of ways. Certainly attracted the attention of our colleagues from across the province. And then finally, I think I provided an update to council prior to Christmas about a joint letter that I co-sponsored with the mayor of Dawson Creek. The mayor was contacted about a natural gas project, a LNG, a proposed LNG plant in the Quebec region. Mayor Baumstead and I did a bit of a call-out to our colleagues on each side of the border. And to date, we've received about 22 municipalities have signed on to that joint letter in support of that. And just for context, I received this information a while ago, because council may have been wondering in terms of the scale of the project. If the project went ahead, it's, as I mentioned earlier, fully committed to taking sole-source natural gas from Western Canada. But the scale of the project would represent a 10% increase in the total Canadian production of natural gas and would be about a 15% to 20% increase in Canadian natural gas exports. So it is obviously a significant project. Was happy to be able to support that and have since had a conference call with Mayor Baumstead and representatives of the company to find out, to discuss other ways that we might be able to endorse or support the project as it enters the regulatory phase of its as it enters the regulatory phase of its uh, development in Quebec. Um, but a good example, I think of how municipal leaders uh, from across the country can stand up to speak about how important resource development of all kinds is important to communities uh, from coast to coast to coast. And so I just wanted to let council know that I was uh, adding that endorsement uh, to this project on behalf of the city of Grand Prairie and on behalf of all my council colleagues, because I believe that's something that uh, our council is fully behind. And with that, uh, that's all I had to provide updates on. Um, I believe we do have an in-camera item to receive some advice from our administration. Um, and so I would ask for a motion to go in camera. Councilor Bressi.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'd move that council go in camera.
Okay, thanks very much. So we have a motion to go in camera. So we will uh, end our webcast here. We will uh, likely come back um, to adjourn the meeting, uh, but I do not believe that there is any business arising out of this update from administration. Um, and so for uh, friends of the media, uh, there's probably no reason to stick around for after council unless there's something really uh, hot off of our council agenda that you want to catch one of us. Um, but uh, we will now move into our in-camera session. Thank you very much. Oh, sorry, I'll call for the vote to move into our in-camera session. Uh, call the question all in favor. Thank you. Motion carries unanimously, so we'll go into our in-camera session. Thank you very much.